All right, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Trachis.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting, May 5th, 2020?
No moves. Councilwoman Gray?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The May 5th, 2020 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening. We will move to road and bridge matters. Under Road and Bridge Matters, Item Number 1, 4th District.
Receive, file, plan specifications, and detailed estimate of cost be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids as recommended.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to other communications, Item Number 1.
Receive and file same motion for Item Number 2, and that will be the order.
Item Number 3, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the change of owner be approved as requested, please.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number 4.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item Number 5, 3rd District.
Please hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Item Number 6, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number 7, 5th District.
Receive, file, and refer to the Council Budget and Policy Coordinator and the County Auditor, and that will be the order.
Item Number 8.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item Number 9, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number 10.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through Item Number 12, and that will be the order.
Item Number 13, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Please read the add-ons.
Under Other Communications, Item Number 1, 3rd District.
This is legislation that I requested that I want to clarify, because there was apparently some confusion on this. This is to require members of the County Executive's Group of Advisors led by Cindy Brinkley that will help the county spend the $173.5 million. I didn't want this request for legislation that would require those individuals on that group of advisors to file a St. Louis County Financial Interest Statement on an annual basis. Didn't want to confuse that with the County Council Committee that is looking at the same expenses. So I will receive file and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number 2, 3rd District.
Receive, file, refer to the County Counselor.
So ordered.
Item Number 3.
Receive, file, and refer to the Special Committee for Oversight of COVID-19 Funding and Expenditures, and that will be the order.
Item Number 4, 7th District.
This is a request for legislation to suspend some zoning laws to help businesses get up and running during this time until December 31st. So receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number 5.
Receive and file, and that will be the order. Report to the County Executive.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, everyone. This morning, I attended a opening of a new testing site at North Oaks Plaza in North County. This was sponsored by the St. Louis County NAACP and Affine Health Care. Last month, I attended an opening in Jennings of another testing site sponsored by Affine Health Care. Well, St. Louis County, NAACP and Affine have been important partners in responding to this pandemic, especially as it affects the St. Louis County region. We know that more testing is needed, and St. Louis County is working aggressively to try and acquire as many tests as possible. This testing is especially important to our underrepresented populations, not only so we can identify who is sick and needs help, but also identify someone who may be a carrier of COVID-19 and may not have symptoms. Without this information at hand, we can't responsibly open our stay-at-home orders and relax them in light of our needs for social distancing. That's why these measures will remain in place until next Monday, and we're moving in a thoughtful and cautious process in easing our stay-at-home orders. We will always prioritize saving lives, but we also understand we have to get the economy going again as well. Through the CARES Act grant, we have set aside $17.5 million to be divided among the seven council districts for small business relief. I want to thank the council members who have already been working on this program and thank them for the work that is yet to come in processing these applications. This is important lifeline. We want to make sure we help our small businesses as much as possible. Many of them are eager to be open on May 18th, and many of them are going to pause while they put together the procedures that they need to make sure their employees are safe and their customers are safe. And they'll wait until they're comfortable. We think that's okay, too. The data we use to determine how to proceed is collected by our health systems. And we receive these reports on a daily basis from the St. Louis Pandemic Task Force. We've been watching these reports as hospital admissions and ICU admissions, ventilator usage, and other metrics are starting to decline. And this is moving in the right direction. People are still getting sick, especially in our vulnerable populations. Our nursing homes here in St. Louis County and across the country have been hit especially hard. These are our mothers, our fathers, our sisters, and our brothers. And their isolation is especially heartfelt when we recognize the restrictions on visitors that are necessary to keep them safe. We are fortunate here in St. Louis County to have a large pool of health care providers, many of them working as volunteers in our health department as part of our high-risk task force. These individuals are assigned nursing homes and other facilities in the St. Louis region to monitor. They call them on a regular basis. They ask them about their needs, provide them with masks and other PPE and educational materials. We also have a Quick Response Task Force in St. Louis County Department of Public Health. This includes epidemiologists and other health professionals. Whenever we have a COVID-19 positive patient in a nursing facility, our public health department is ready to respond with tests, with contact tracing, with PPE and masks if needed, and to help with a deep cleaning. All this is done within 24 hours, and their service is available 24/7. We've already provided 20,000 masks to our nursing facilities in the St. Louis region. We know that this pandemic is actually pre-crisis. We have a public health crisis, a humanitarian crisis, and an economic crisis. Tomorrow, we will announce $2.5 million in grants to agencies in the St. Louis region to provide food delivery and food to our St. Louis County residents. These are agencies that have a long history and a long track record in our community. We're asking them to scale up their services. Over the coming months, they will provide thousands of meals to our residents in St. Louis County. Our Department of Public Health has robust programs for contact tracing, for testing, and providing PPE to our community. We are already in the process of ordering 100,000 tests, and we'll know more about that pipeline by the end of the week. Today, the state promised us another 2,000 tests as we step up our testing process in St. Louis County and our coordination of a testing strategy with our community partners. We've also committed to study exactly how the virus is traveling in our community. And that testing study will be awarded later this week with one of our universities, our schools of public health here in St. Louis County, providing the testing and the analysis of test results for us to understand the spread of COVID-19. We're also using new contact tracing software to be more efficient. We're in the process of hiring over 100 people to participate in our contact tracing program to work alongside our volunteers that are already in place. And we began distributing over 200,000 masks. We're working with our educational institutions, with our social services agencies, to find the most vulnerable people in our population who would benefit. We're expecting an order of another 750 masks by Memorial Day. To continue slowing the spread of the virus in our community, we have to follow our social distancing guidelines. Even one exception can lead to many, many infections in our community. Until a vaccine is available, we're going to have to proceed with caution. That's all I have, Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. County Executive. Report of special committees.
I have two things. I have a little bit of an update about today's meeting, but before I get to that, for last week's meeting, please receive file and the report be adopted as submitted. Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all so much. I just want to give a real quick recap. And you're all welcome to watch our recorded session on the council website, and a summary report will be available soon and entered into the record next week as well. But in the meeting this morning, we learned a lot about the structure of the St. Louis County CARES response to the pandemic, which, as Dr. Page just mentioned last week, is leading in three key areas, or which Dr. Page just mentioned right now, is leading in three key areas: humanitarian, public health, and economic rescue. Woven into, around, and through these key areas are layer upon layer of legal, compliance, data and outcomes, communications, diversity and inclusion, IT and procurement. These are all the things that are involved in every step of everything that's happening here. Cindy Brinkley, the Lead Volunteer Advisor, presented an overview of the workflow process at a macro level and the decision-making processes within some of the grant programs. She also talked about the criteria for the County CARES advisors and volunteers now and going forward, and an overview of the CARES Fund allocations by department. To date, we have just over $950,000 in actual expenses and just under $24 million in current commitments, 17.5 million of which is for the Small Business Relief Program. 1,950 Small Business Relief Program applications have been received in St. Louis County, and all businesses we select for awards will be audited by a CPA before any checks will be cut. IT reported that a portal for council members should be available by close of business Wednesday with exportable data that we can further break down in Excel and share with our mayors for their input. Applications for these small business grants will close this weekend, and we should start receiving applications later this week. Because of high-dollar amounts, we went into a little bit more detail this morning about process and funds for the Dignified Transfer Center, IT expenses related to COVID, and how payroll is being audited for allocation to the CARES grant. As we move forward, we will continue to ask questions about how decisions are being made, engage with the public in deciding how this money is spent, and we will continue to request additional information for any expenses over $25,000. Our meetings are publicly held each Tuesday morning at 10:00 a.m., and you can find information about the meetings and the public comment process on the council website. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dunaway. We will now move into the public forum portion of our meeting tonight.
Excuse me, Madam Chairwoman, may I please make a comment?
Yes, Councilwoman Dunaway, you are recognized.
So, these past few weeks, while hiding behind the voices of Diane Valenti and Chris Gran Howard, the authors of many public comments have turned portions of our council meetings into a forum as toxic as the Twitter sphere and as simply beneath the standards we should uphold for the way we conduct our government's business. To those authors, I would ask you to think about the example you are setting for the people around you. I would ask you to show even a modicum of empathy for the people that you are asking to put their voice to your hateful words. Our colleagues that like and care about us even when our politics collide. You are using them to be mean. You don't have to like my progressive values. You don't have to like my swearing in, and you don't have to like the way any of us vote. And we are all so lucky to live in a country that empowers you to publicly comment when we disagree and when we agree. But ad hominem attacks are not advancing the public interest or the objectives of these meetings. In my experience, attacks the likes of which have recently been brought to our public debate are intended to hurt people. And if that is your intention, it is working. It does hurt when you attack my colleagues and when you attack me. So while you're thinking about the example that you're setting and how you're impacting Chris and Diane, I would also ask you to consider what it is that hurting other people brings you. And now I would like to formally request that this council find a way to strike a balance between providing an opportunity for the public to be heard and its participation in our government, but also protects the decorum of this institution. Thank you so much, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dunaway. As we move into the public forum tonight, I want to take a moment to again review the rules that we are obligated to follow. Our virtual forum requires that only comments sent to councilcomments@stlewisco.com on the day in which the meeting is being held, at least an hour before the meeting is set to start, will be recorded into the public record. The email must contain the commenter's name and physical address. The email must be 400 words or less, which is the equivalent of three minutes of verbal communication, which is what is typically allowed during the live forum at our normal meetings. The Administrative Director or designee will read your comment out loud during the meeting, and it will be recorded into the Journal. I also want to remind everyone that our public forum is a privilege. It is not an entitlement. Our public forum is part of the council's shared goal to promote transparency and to encourage public participation in county government. We all have a role to play to protect and ensure the integrity of this forum so that this forum can be a source of pride for us all and can serve as a positive example to residents and other policymaking bodies in our community. I encourage every person who participates in this forum to speak with tolerance and respect towards the council, towards other officials in county government, and to each other, especially in times of disagreement. With that, Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Our first public speaker this evening is Jeff Kramer, 2119 Bonroyal Drive, DePere, Missouri, 63131. COVID-19 might be a real virus, but I am appalled that you have not allowed all businesses to reopen by now. This lockdown has gone far enough at two months long. Do you realize how many people have lost their jobs and businesses because of this pandemic that was blown way out of proportion? What is your agenda? The House of Pain gyms have set a precedence for other businesses in this county to have its locations reopened in Maryland Heights and Chesterfield. Why is St. Louis County planning to fight this business in court using our tax dollars? The county is spending the CARES Act federal funding to hire 100 contact tracers for St. Louis County. Why? So you can track individuals? And why fund that instead of providing relief to small businesses that are dying from forced closure? The six-foot rule and wearing masks is not necessary anymore, and the numbers of COVID-19 cases have been exaggerated in order for hospitals to get further funding from our government. Several churches have indicated that they will be reopening with constraints on how many people can attend church at each service. Is restricting church attendance even constitutional? It violates our First Amendment right to freely assemble. Dr. Page, are you trying to violate our God-given rights, too? Please put a stop to this nonsense and drop all charges against House of Pain and any other businesses that want to reopen, including churches, hair salons, restaurants, bars, and any other viable business that the public needs immediately. Sarah Jensen, M.D., 13597 Royal Glen Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63131. I am a physician in the county. I believe St. Louis City and County should impose a mask order if opening. I think PPE should be provided to those in need through health department delivery or availability, or ask for individuals to wear a scarf or bandana. We mandate this practice in my office now, something to protect us while opening. From Anna Rochal, M.D., 348 West Manor Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017. I am an oncologist with Siteman Cancer Center Northwest and Washington University. I am riding in strong support of slow, measured, and data-driven approach to reopening of St. Louis County. Although the curve is flattened significantly, allowing my colleagues on frontline to provide best possible care to COVID-19 patients, the situation is very likely to worsen significantly if stay-at-home order is lifted too soon and without measures in place to control spread of new cases. I applaud continued efforts to hire more contact tracers and increase testing before reopening. I also support a slow, methodical, data-driven approach to phased reopening with continued monitoring of the impact. We also need to do more to educate the public about mask-wearing and consider making it mandatory. Thank you. From Shannon McCullough, DVM, 9948 Litzinger Road, St. Louis, Missouri, 63124. It is time to reopen immediately, not May 18th. Open every business that wants to be opened immediately. This is the third email I have sent asking you to do the right thing and allow businesses to open. When we look back 10 years from now, we will see very clearly that we all did what was asked of us initially in March to flatten the curve so that the hospitals would not be overwhelmed with cases of COVID-19. But the closures were never intended to go this long. Had all of us known that in March, we wouldn't have complied so readily. We need herd immunity. Testing is not the answer. Vaccines are not the answer. We need to continue to isolate those of us most vulnerable, but it is time for the rest of us to get out there and get back to the business of everyday life. It is time to open facilities that support special-needs children. Families with special-needs kids are drowning. It is time to open up programs for children without special needs. These kids can't go another two months at home. You cannot dictate who is allowed to be open and who is not. Who gave you that power? Where does it say in the Constitution that Ace Hardware can be open because they are an essential business, but Harry's Barber Shop cannot be open because they are not essential? Who decided this? Who has that power? What about fairness? The lawsuits have already begun, and they will continue. Reopen St. Louis County immediately. P.S. Lisa Clancy, what were you talking about in your tweet about smashing the patriarchy and demanding to be treated with respect? That is what I am asking you to do. Treat all of us with small businesses with respect and allow us to open. From Heidi Rogers, 13021 Mason View Court, St. Louis, Missouri, 63141. I agree with a slow, methodical reopening of businesses in St. Louis County. I would recommend all citizens wear masks in public places, which will protect themselves and the more vulnerable populations. People will need to continue to social distance, wash their hands, and wear masks over their mouth and nose to minimize the spread of COVID-19. Thank you.
Madam Chair, continuing, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounced this citizen's name. The following comment is from Thanh My Voe, 3635 Vista Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri, 63111. Excuse me. To whom it may concern. My name is Thanh My Voe, M.D. I'm a nephrologist at St. Louis University Hospital. I support Dr. Clancy and Dr. Page in their decision in reopening St. Louis County and city in a slow and tactical manner. I'm currently working at SLU seeing nephrology consults. In the last 1.5 weeks, I have taken care of patients who are unfortunate enough to have the COVID-19 infection. These patients are sick. Despite carrying out heroic measures, i.e. prescribing dialysis, we have not been able to save a handful of them. I'm reading medical articles on a daily basis to learn more, but there is just not enough sound data, medical evidence, to guide us. I'm worried about how things may be this winter. Every year, the hospital is full of patients who are dying of influenza infections. Winter 2020 will be different, as we will see patients dying not only of influenza, but COVID-19 infections. We will not be able to handle it. I spoke to my friend, who is a critical care specialist, a few days ago. Hours before I spoke to him, he had to decide who to save, since he only had one dialysis catheter left in the whole entire hospital. He chose to save his 36-year-old patient instead of his 92-year-old patient. This is not fair and ageism, and is ageism, but this is war, and nothing in war is fair. Again, I support Dr. Page and Dr. Page for slowly reopening. We have to learn from other states and countries who have been inundated with COVID-19. Andrea S. Otto, M.D., 111 Prospect Avenue, Kirkwood, Missouri, 63122. I strongly support a slow and staged reopening of the areas of our state hit harder by COVID-19. I advocate for mandatory face mask use in public places and public service announcements educating the public on how to properly wear and clean reusable masks. We have made so much progress towards slowing the spread of the virus and cannot risk a second wave larger than the first. I am very concerned, not only about immediate morbidity and mortality, but also the unknown long-term effects of this virus. As a practicing family medicine physician, I am currently caring for COVID-19 patients on my panel, and all of them have continued residual symptoms or physical limitations more than a month after their clinical recovery or hospital discharge. From my experience serving as a physician in the U.S. Army and participating in the H1N1 pandemic response, I fully understand our current position in terms of what is known and unknown. I also understand the difficult decisions that must be made. We must not act out of panic or fear, but make educated decisions based on the information at hand to responsibly move forward. Following comments from Laura Butler, 2468 Villa Drive, Arnold, Missouri, 63010. Dear Dr. Page, Council Chair Clancy, and the St. Louis County Council, Contact tracing and all the money spent to do that is a violation of our rights, and it's done in the name of public health. We don't need to be traced. We need to operate as responsible adults and not infect others by washing our hands and not going out while sick, protecting our elderly and immune compromised. I do not want to see excuse me, I do not I do not want to see this pass. It's wrong. The government in the name of public health should not be spending money on this, and the American people do not want it. The House of Payne gym owner and the right to open his business, his business is essential to him, his family, his employees, and many people that choose to better their health by exercising there. We do not need the government mandating whether we can keep people safe by sanitizing and cleaning. People have the choice to help lower their cholesterol, blood sugar, heart disease, obesity, and many other health issues. Not everyone has a gym in their home, and exercising, walking, jogging at the park can only do so much. Gyms should have been deemed essential all this time. I work in St. Louis County, and the restrictions to work in my office are beyond ridiculous. To sit at my private desk and wear a mask, no, it's ridiculous. Now to churches. Churches are definitely essential, as they focus on our spiritual health and our social and mental health. The fact that churches have remained closed this long shocks me. We have a right to worship freely and believe, as adult Americans, we know how to keep them safe. It's a violation of our rights to worship freely. Please consider this letter and make changes to how St. Louis County is handling this. Sincerely, Laura Butler. Dear St. Louis County Council... I'm sorry, let me start with the... Shaheen Mansour, 2 Squires Lane, St. Louis, Missouri 63131. Dear St. Louis County Council. I personally agree with opening the economy, but believe it needs to be thoughtful and slow with continued masking in indoor places and continue with social distancing. Sincerely, Shaheen Mansour. Only comments from George L. Rug, 911 Forter Glen Court, St. Louis, Missouri 63129. Dear council members, on April 28, 2020, I sent a letter which contained at least 1,200 words, 12 numbered sections, only up to 400 words are read. Section sent 5 through 7 on 5/5/2020, and I'm now sending the bottom section of 8 through 12 of the letter today. Number eight, comments on adult daycare services. A, continuous care. B, 10 hours, 40-15 minute units, five days. C, planned group activities, food services. D, provider transportation to adult daycare. E, definition of adult daycare is entirely different from that of a group home. See link below. Adult daycare services, home community-based services, and health and senior services. Website listed here is montinidokills.com. Number nine, Montenegro Kills Neighborhoods, offers a lower quality of life for everyone around them. A, shady practices. Their MO, modus operandi, method of operation. B, targets nice, quiet neighborhoods and unincorporated areas without HOAs or neighborhood governing bodies. C, counties that have lax laws regarding group homes. D, set up the following zoning codes and then go back and get conditional use permits that allow them to increase the number of patients that they're allowed to treat. E, they're a medical treatment facility, not a group home. Number 10, ownership, owned by a multi-billion-dollar corporation. B, started in small in 2015, purchased by Leitman Capital Partners. C, expanded wreaking havoc on neighborhoods wherever they've gone. Number 11, physicians who bill. Bill insurance $1,500 per patient per day for their services. They call themselves a group home to get past local zoning code, but they bill insurance as a medical facility. Number 12. Closing group homes can provide service allowing those vulnerable to discrimination access to equitable services. However, corporate-owned, for-profit, short-stay rehabs are not group homes, but businesses testing the limits of FHA and ADA. Treatment facilities pose as group homes. Treatment facilities are big business. Montenegro works behind residents and don't find... Excuse me. Montenegro work behind residents and don't find out until lawn is paved. Montenegro has an army of high-paid lawyers to squash any neighborhood that objects to their shady practices, and most of the time, the law, or more fittingly, lack of laws, is on the side of Montenegro. Think about where each of you live now. Where did you grow up? Where are your children and your grandchildren are living now? The law is about precedence, and if Montenegro is allowed to run a business in this residential area, your street or subdivision could be next.
Comments from Amanna Nasir, 10901 Daughtel Manor Court, St. Louis, Missouri 63146. I personally agree with opening of the economy, but believe it needs to be thoughtful and slow with continued masking in indoor public places and continue with social distancing. From Celeste Whitzel, 3116 Southridge Park Lane, St. Louis, Missouri 63129. In a post-dispatch letter to the editor regarding the COVID-175 million, Barry Chad Crevecore wrote, quote, "A good part of Clancy's defense was related to the steps the council takes to authorize expenditures. Instead of streamlining procedures, Clancy and members voting yes totally abandoned their duties and responsibilities. Clancy's job and that of the council is to protect the interests of St. Louis County residents, not to give the county executive free rein." End quote. Obviously, Clancy failed in her job to protect the citizens of St. Louis County. Instead, she and her Democrat colleagues voted to not only give the county executive free rein, but to crown him king. Bill McClellan stated in his recent column that Democrats in St. Louis County have lost their way, and that Clancy bullied through a bill to disallow council oversight on the millions of dollars the county is getting from the feds for virus relief. McClellan said Clancy acts like a character in Mel Brooks' comedy, Blazing Saddles: The Treasure of Sierra Madre, when the outlaws were gathering to attack Rock Ridge. When being presented their badges, the outlaws declared, "Badges? We don't need no stinking badges." Clancy seemingly declared oversight? We don't need no stinking oversight. SLU political science professor Ken Warren weighed in, quote, "It's not unusual in government to give all that money to the county executive to spend at will. I don't think this is a good idea." End quote. The Post-Dispatch editorial board weighed in, quote, "Even if they have the best of intentions, their backroom partisan maneuvers stink of impropriety." McClellan wrote, quote, "For a liberal Democrat, the rule is this: When you've lost the Post-Dispatch editorial board, you've lost the room." End quote. McClellan further wrote, quote, "Thanks to Clancy and her brother John Clancy, Sam Page's campaign manager, Page will now be free to dole out federal money without council oversight. Sadly, admitting malfeasance has gone out of style among many Democrats. As a party, the Democrats have become preachy, and self-righteousness always ends badly. Sam Page will be giving out lots of money in a hurry, and some of it will invariably go to people or companies who don't deserve it. When that happens, the blame game will start, and the Republicans will pin the tail on the donkey." End quote, said McClellan. Hopefully, U.S. Attorney Hal Goldsmith will also pin the tail on the Democrat donkey. From Patrick Hootland, 104 Merrimack Ridge Drive, Fenton, Missouri. I am writing to express my concern regarding the county's decision to file suit against the House of Payne and its request for information regarding the customers who frequented it. Is this really what the council has come to? Using government power to stifle an independent business? While I would say the county should be ashamed by this decision, my fear is that some take pride in it instead. County Executive Page, you took the Hippocratic oath, which holds you to the standards, to do no harm. How do you measure harm? Can you not see that the restrictions you have imposed on county residents in opposition to state restrictions is causing harm to the very people you are supposed to serve? Now you want to compound that harm by using the courts to go after a business which has brought in tax dollars to the county. Those same tax dollars are now being used to shut down that business. Shame on you. I know you are scared. Many people are afraid. But governing out of fear is not leadership. It is cowardice. Have faith in your constituents to take the precautions they feel are necessary to preserve their lives should they go out in public and allow those who choose to stay home to do so. This is not just about the House of Payne, it is for every worker who chooses to return to work. Every job is essential to that person and their families, but I suppose you do not see it that way. Do you have the courage to look a business owner in the eye and tell them their business is nonessential? I doubt it. From Kate Stratton, 10253 Eddingham Terrace, St. Louis, Missouri 63128. Unelected county executive Sam Page thinks he is above the law. How can St. Louis County taxpayers' money be used to sue House of Payne gyms? Basically, you are using taxpayer dollars that Payne gyms have paid, being used against him for trying not to go bankrupt. This is unconstitutional and against the law. A ruling of the Supreme Court shortly after the Civil War in Ex parte Milligan, 71 U.S. 2/1866, which yet stands to this day. Neither the legislature nor any executive or judicial officer may disregard the provisions of the Constitution in case of emergency. Section 98, therefore, anyone who declares the suspension of constitutionally guaranteed rights to freely travel, peacefully assemble, earn a living, freely worship, et cetera, and/or attempts to enforce such suspension within the continental United States of America is making war against our constitutions and therefore we, the people. Each of you have taken an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of Missouri, and all local ordinances of St. Louis County to faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office. Your purpose is to serve the people of St. Louis County, and right now, you are not upholding your oath or listening to the people of St. Louis County who want to work and go to church. Ms. Clancy, why do you need to sit in your car and cry? What part of the patriarchy is in charge at the St. Louis County Council? You have Sam Page in your pocket, and your squad runs the council. You continuously point out at the weekly meetings that you are in charge. If you are lamenting an income loss, then you should immediately schedule a vote to reopen St. Louis County businesses. According to Lisa Clancy, why is the council spending the CARES Act federal funding to hire 100 contact tracers for St. Louis County? What is the point of tracing? Are you also planning on putting people in isolation? Where would people be taken? Would any of your family be taken away from you? I don't want my tax dollars being spent for tracers or isolation. This is another example of how each week, the Democrat-led county council demonstrates a propensity for mishandling our money. From Christine Warner, 49 Portland Drive, St. Louis, Missouri 63131. As Lisa Clancy tweeted on Mother's Day, quote, "Demand to be treated with respect today and every day." End quote. I demand that you all start treating your taxpayers and councilmen with respect. Stop using our hard-earned tax dollars to fight your emotional disapproval of small businesses trying to stay alive in this economic crisis. Your job as councilmembers is know and understand your community, help small business owners, and keep this county thriving. Stop wasting tax dollars suing small businesses, and use the CARE Act's federal funding appropriately and with transparency. Give your taxpayers the respect you demand today and every day. Make St. Louis a place people want to visit and dwell.
Madam Chair, continuing. Comments from Rhonda Espy, 12726 Winfield Pines Court, DePere, Missouri 63131. It is time to open up. The whole purpose of the shutdown was to slow the virus and prepare our hospitals. You've had plenty of time to do this. There's obviously a high-risk category of people that we can protect without taking our civil liberties away and hurting our economy. That is the elderly, obese, and diabetic. The younger have a low risk of dying from this, and half the people who get this don't even show symptoms. This coronavirus is out there, and there's no way you can track it or contain it. And in fact, Governor Cuomo just said that 66% of the patients showing up at the hospitals with the coronavirus were staying home. I'm pretty sure that our whole family had the coronavirus based on new symptoms that are out. Where are the antibody tests? Based on other antibodies tests they have done in other countries and states, this virus is less deadly than when they initially thought, comparable to the flu. We don't shut down our country because of millions of flu cases each year. So what is your purpose now? Are you trying to save lives? Well, I can guarantee you're going to lose more lives to other causes if you continue to keep things closed down. You're hurting our economy. You're hurting our mental health. Statistically, there are approximately 50,000 that die from suicide a year, drug overdose, and alcohol use. That's a total of 150 for all three. Not to mention, those people are afraid to go to the hospital who've had heart attacks, strokes, and other treatments delayed. Seems that you're purposely trying to hold us hostage. We are done. We have done what you've asked, and it's time to open things up. As of right now, you're hurting many more lives by continuing to keep St. Louis County shut down. Other businesses and workout places can open up and be safe, just like the grocery stores. Seems to me, the more widespread people are less likely to spread coronavirus. Putting everybody at a few places make it more likely for people to get it. That's just common sense. You don't need scientific data to back that up. Paula Coughlin, 14 Grenada Way, Ladue, Missouri 63124. To Sam Page and the St. Louis County Council. Yesterday, I emailed the following to the investigative teams of all the local television stations under the subject Urgent Investigation Needed. I'm writing to ask you to investigate and reveal to their public the recent shameful actions of the St. Louis County Council. Last week, Sam Page and the county council signed an unlimited fee contract, a high-priced law firm of Lewis Rice, to defend the numerous lawsuits that have been filed by St. Louis County residents against the county council as a result of their decision to keep the county shut down in spite of the state's opening. The council voted to use federal CARES Act grant to pay for these legal fees. The federal CARES Act money was given to the county to help St. Louis County residents, small businesses, frontline workers, hospitals needing PPE and testing, to help repair the damage that resulted from COVID-19. The community needs to know that this money is being misappropriated, and that millions of federal dollars given to this community will fund legal fees that arose directly from the county council's arbitrary decision to remain closed and on lockdown. If Sam Page continues to slow-walk the lifting of the shutdown, more lawsuits will be filed against him and the council, more legal fees will be incurred, and less federal money will be available to help the residents of St. Louis County. In addition, it is also shameful and puzzling that the county council employs 24 full-time attorneys as county councilors, whose salaries are paid with our tax dollars, and not one of these attorneys is competent enough to handle defending the county council in litigation. Why are so many attorneys on staff when they farm out the litigation to high-priced law firms? This should also be investigated as a huge waste and misuse of tax dollars. Please investigate and report on this as soon as possible. I am hopeful that the public pressure and shame will force Sam Page and the county council to use the federal CARES Act grant to help St. Louis County, not themselves. I look forward to what a series of reports outlining to your constituents your irresponsible and illegal plans for the federal CARES Act money. Public outrage will be reflected at the ballot box, and thank goodness, because St. Louis County deserves better. Sincerely, Paula Coughlin. Following comment from Michael Ari, 279 Gray Cliff Bluff Drive, St. Louis, Missouri 63129. I am opposed to the proposed use of 7190 Christopher Drive as either a group home or an adult daycare center. The more I learn about this proposal, the more opposed I am. Montenegro's PR states that the proposed use is a group home for eight or less. I prefer the house to continue as a single-family residence like every other house in this neighborhood, rather than being converted to a for-profit commercial use. If the house is converted to a commercial use in spite of the overwhelming opposition of nearby homeowners, at a minimum, the exterior appearance of the residence should continue to be that of a residence, not a commercial facility, in order to maintain an appearance consistent with every other home in this neighborhood. It is my understanding that Montenegro has also submitted documents to the county proposing It is my understanding that Montenegro has also submitted documents to the county proposing 19 parking places on the property for an adult daycare center. This use is obviously extremely objectionable since it will constitute an intense commercial use and will present an appearance that is totally inconsistent with nearby homes. County residents living in a residential neighborhood have a right to expect the commercial interests will not be allowed to change the character of their neighborhood. It is incumbent upon the county executive and the county council to protect their rights and expectations in that regard. Again, please forgive me if I mispronounce this name. This is from Kevin Sue, M.D., 660 South Euclid Avenue, Campus Box 8051, St. Louis, Missouri, 63110. As an infectious disease physician at Jewish Barnes Hospital, I am often faced with patients who want to stop taking their antibiotics before their infections are actually cured. After all, they're beginning to feel better. Why do they need to keep taking a medication that may be noxious, inconvenient, or even cause some degree of harm, all on its own right? What those patients don't understand is that you can begin to feel better even while destructive bacteria still lurk in the background. And if you don't continue a treatment for sufficient duration, that the disease can easily come back, often stronger and even more difficult to deal with. St. Louis, right now, is exactly like one of my impatient patients. Except we're not really feeling better. We've just seen the pace of COVID-19 infections stabilize so that we're not actively getting worse, and our hospitals are able to handle the load. Our treatment has just started to turn the tide, and it still may be weeks or months before we are secure from this threat. Those who now clamor for reopening don't realize that it won't take much to vastly worsen the local epidemic. Please, don't listen to those who would decry transient hardship at the cost of our community's long-term health and safety. Keep the lockdown going for as long as possible, for all our sakes. When the county does reopen, please plan the reopening process slowly and carefully as possible. When this COVID-19 starts to spread in a community, it takes a few weeks to show up as detectable cases in hospitals. This means that each opening stage should be followed by several-week monitoring period to make sure that worsening spread is detected before it can get too severe. Let science and medicine determine how St. Louis opens back up, not hasty, thoughtless Following comments from Kim Elias, 51 Portland Drive, St. Louis County. When the uber-left squad leader on the County Council, Lisa Clancy, loses her support of the left-leaning Post Dispatch, the Democrats have a problem. To be called a bully and intolerant by your own people, that speaks volumes. Clancy's misandrist, in parentheses, and extreme hatred for men and boys, in parentheses, ways are being called out by all, and something needs to change. It is time to appoint a new leader of our County Council, as Ms. Clancy seems too prejudiced to fulfill this position. Challenge everyone to follow Ms. Clancy on Twitter. It's quite the eye-opener of childish and unprofessional behavior. When Ms. Dunaway says we can trust the council to make decisions with no oversight, we all have a major problem. This is the same woman who took an oath to the people of this county on a Dr. Seuss book. That's how serious she takes her position and a vow and as far as any of us should trust her word. She has been a faithful sidekick to Clancy. When Sam Page has become so blinded by power that he takes extreme measures to pick winners and losers in our county, we have to rise up and take a stand. I can buy liquor, kill a baby, get my dog groomed, but I cannot get preventative healthcare that might prevent a terminal illness, go to a gym to stay healthy, or get a haircut. I'm happy driving 10 miles to our bordering counties to pay for services Page has deemed nonessential within our county. I love giving those other counties my sales tax. However, it is tragic what Page is doing to the hard-working people of St. Louis County, especially while he and the council continue to get paid. We will not forget the economic devastation and draconian measures he has placed on our citizens when we vote in November for a new county executive. As a tax-paying citizen of St. Louis County, I stand with the small-business people of this county and request that we reopen our county and let the people get back to work. I want the lawsuit against the gym, House of Pain, using my tax dollars be dropped. I stand with these hard-working people trying to provide for their families.
Continuing from Jordan Haller, 10569 Maddox Place, St. Louis, Missouri, 63114. As a hairstylist, it is impossible to social distance. A mask is only so effective, and our long, direct exposure to multiple people further endangers us and our community. PPE is expensive and very hard to obtain and will only be worse when thousands of businesses reopen in the next coming weeks. Disinfectant shortages mean we cannot properly clean between clients. Barbicide is out of stock and doesn't expect to be able to fulfill orders for several weeks. Per state board, it is mandatory to have in order to operate our business. These added expenses and being able to service less clients mean significant profit cuts. Many of my clients are terrified to come into the salon and are deciding not to. If we decide not to open, we will lose access to PUA. This is forcing hands on professionals to choose to work over our health. It is public knowledge that the decision to reopen is not based on epidemiology but political pressure. From Tom Sullivan, 751 Syracuse, University City, Missouri, 63130. Madam Chair and members of the council, Bill 109, a proposed $2 million contract with Trinity Services Group, Inc. to provide food services and vocational programs for the county jail, deserves a lot of scrutiny. The company has had numerous problems all around the country. In September 2019, the Phoenix News Times did a story about Trinity's problems with the Arizona Department of Corrections. Ex-inmates claimed a prison served by Trinity received boxes of food labeled "not for human consumption." Some of the lunch meat was said to have turned green. In April 2019, a class-action lawsuit against Trinity by Trinity employees was reported in California. Trinity was charged with violating labor laws that require meal breaks and rest periods for employees. In 2018, a story in a Utah newspaper was headlined "Maggots, Mold, and Dirt Reported in Weber Jail Food." Weber is a county in Utah served by Trinity. In 2017, Trinity was hit with $2 million in penalties by the Michigan Department of Corrections for unauthorized meal substitutions, inadequate staffing levels, and sanitation violations, among other penalties. The food provided by Trinity at one Michigan prison was said to be among the reasons inmates rioted and caused nearly $1 million in damage. In January 2015, a story in the Atlanta Journal-Constitution told of numerous problems in Georgia jails involving Trinity. The story also told of a federal lawsuit by prisoners against Trinity in Pennsylvania due to the poor quality of food. What is most troubling about Trinity is the company has the same problems all over the country. They are not isolated matters. Neither are the problems I mentioned, a comprehensive list. There could be many more. I also would want to know how many lawsuits the company is involved in. I have read the letter of response from Raul Bonasco, Justice Services Director, but it is not reassuring. It seems to me the evaluation committee pretty much depended on Trinity for information and references and did little due diligence itself. As I don't have to tell you, the county jail has already had many problems. I don't think you want any more. Thank you for listening to my comments. From Diane Unger, 26 Baxter Lane, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017. I respectfully request that you discontinue playing your same broken record of spending the taxpayer money without thinking about what you are doing. The money tree is painfully dying. The county has been granted funding to help our businesses see some light at the end of the tunnel. Spending that money on the hiring of contact tracers, I've heard the number is 100, possibly more, seems to be foolish. The symptoms, severity, incubation period, contagion period, and recovery period for this virus are affecting all people in different ways. How will contact tracing change any of that? You expect taxpayer money to sustain the county budget. As businesses are currently shuttered and as they will undoubtedly face financial struggle as they prepare to reopen, the CARES funding should be directed to them. County revenue comes from thriving businesses. From Terry Deluge, 2 Fair Lake Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63005. House of Pain Gyms is following the lead of several counties in Pennsylvania and has reopened their locations in Maryland Heights and Chesterfield. St. Louis County plans to fight this business in court using your taxpayer dollars. Each week, this Democrat-led County Council demonstrates a propensity for mishandling our money. You are spending the CARES Act federal funding to hire 100 contact tracers for St. Louis County, according to Lisa Clancy. Why so many? And why fund that instead of providing relief to small businesses that are dying from forced closure? From Kathy Ellis, 7140 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63129. Please stop Montenegro Corporation from running their business in our neighborhood. We know this was not approved by you, but you have the power to overturn a decision that was made from incorrect information. Montenegro's lawyers convinced the county building department to approve their purchase by pretending to be a group home. They are not even close to being a group home and are only using the excuse to get what they want. The county building department failed us by their oversight of letting a medical treatment facility with a full-rotating staff who treat patients temporarily at the high cost of over $1,000 a day. Montenegro is a for-profit business, not a group home, and they do not belong in an established residential neighborhood. They used sneaky tactics to get approved, and this needs to be addressed. You are here to represent and protect us as residents, and we were never considered. Please consider this wrongful situation and stop businesses from intruding neighborhoods. Most residents in the area are upset at recently finding out what Montenegro tries to keep a secret. We were all let down by our county when we were ignored in this matter. This is a dangerous location for additional daily traffic. There is only one very narrow, windy road with no shoulders, which causes safety problems already, and there have been too many accidents to add more traffic to an already busy road. Montenegro usually targets locations with many more acres than the 1.4 acres this one has. It's a big house, though, so the parking lot they want in front will take up most of the front yard and cause additional water drainage problems. I think you would all feel the same way if this were your neighborhood. We have a petition of 500 residents who are against this business coming into our neighborhood, and we need you to represent us and overturn this misapproval. Please do the right thing.
Continuing citizen comments from Mimi Voe, M.D., 134 Stony Side Lane, St. Louis, Missouri, My name is Dr. Mimi Voe, and I'm an IM physician in private practice in St. Louis City but live in the county. I'm writing to support Dr. Page's thoughtful, slow reopening of businesses. I agree with opening businesses to improve our economy and prevent unintended consequences of isolation. However, doing so with leadership guidance and communication is crucial. Masks and social distancing should continue to be recommended as well as limiting small-group gatherings. The sentiment is shared among those in my Olivet neighborhood, as well as approximately 1,000 sufficient moms, who I am fortunate to be in contact with regularly across St. Louis. My private practice continues to struggle with supply chain issues. We do not have fit-tested N95s to see active COVID-19 patients. Our medical supplier, Henry Shine, has repeatedly canceled orders for items such as normal saline intravenous fluids, masks, and gowns, and even medical waste trash bags, is not able to fulfill. I care for 4,000 patients and recently began COVID-19 IgG antibody testing through Quest and LabCorp. I had six patients that had symptoms but not able to get the PCR nasal swabs and returned with COVID-19 positive antibody. These patients were on quarantine under my care. These patient cases, and more like them, will not be used in our Missouri data, so the true number of cases is likely much higher than we know. The past two months of stay-at-home measures has been successful in curbing this disease here and evident in my patients and true throughout our metro area as well. Thank you to our St. Louis County leadership for all your hard work in keeping us safe. Please note that the majority of people in our community trust and agree with your thoughtful, slow, and scientific approach to reopening. And then attached to the email is an image of Minnesota dialing-in-and-dialing-out approach to reopening, which I think is visually easy to understand. If you need any help in translating information to Vietnamese, I'm happy to help you in your Following comments from Anna Crafton, 7204 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63129. Dr. Page, as a resident of Oakville, I'm writing to voice my concern about the proposed medical treatment facility being allowed to move into a residential home on Christopher Drive. How could the zoning commission and the council's office not see the red flags pop up with a single search into the for-profit corporation Montenegro? Shame on those responsible for not doing due diligence to question the proposal as a long-term residential group home, when in fact, Montenegro plans to have eight to 12 clients that would live onsite for one to three months. Add in the number of staff that will be needed to run the place, deliveries, and the amount of visitors to the facility. Clearly, you have way more traffic than Christopher Drive can handle. Again, this would have been something to look into before giving the okay with this venture. Dr. Page, you and I have been let down by those put in charge, and I ask you to put an end to this debacle and tell Montenegro no. Following comments from Brandon and Julie Rathgerber, living at 2505 Brush Creek Drive. We live catty-corner from 7190 Christopher Drive. We are writing to express our concern over the sale of 7190 and its intended use. The property was sold to Montenegro, a for-profit corporation that runs in-treatment patients across the country. As a family who homeschools four children all under the age of nine, we spend a lot of our days engaged in outdoor learning activities. We are able to provide our children with these healthy outdoor experiences because we've taken the time to build friendships with our neighbors. Without knowing our neighbors, we wouldn't feel safe allowing our children to explore in the manner in which they do. If 7190 becomes an in-treatment facility, staff members and service providers would be coming in and out on a daily basis. In addition, there would also be a turnover of clients every few months, along with their visitors. With this property potentially becoming such a high-traffic area, our greatest concern is that we will jeopardize the safety of all the children within our neighborhood. With that said, we strongly feel our residential community is not a proper location for such a facility. Thank you for your time. Following comments from Haley Moore, 2104 Bellevue Avenue, Maplewood, Missouri, 63143. I'm a massage therapist and a business owner in Maplewood. I love my job. I have spent five years building a successful business that is heavily connected to my community. As a member of the Mid-County Chamber of Commerce Board and an educator in my field, being a thoughtful, informed voice is important. With that, I must strongly suggest that massage therapy be categorized in a later phase of the reopening plan. As a business that requires person-to-person contact, social distancing is impossible and creates a high risk of transmission for both provider and client. One of the other most concerning risk factors related to COVID-19 is a markedly increased prevalence of blood clots, thrombosis, in both otherwise asymptomatic and symptomatic people. A life-threatening condition that is specifically -see if I can say this correctly- chondra indicated with massage therapy. I do not say any of this lightly. Staying closed has had a tremendous negative of financial impact. However, with the speed that we have been getting new information, a delay to a later phase of reopening could make the difference in practicing safely. Putting a business with such high-risk factors as these in the May 183 opening is simply irresponsible. Thank you. Following comments from Robert Blunt, 122 Stony Side Lane, Olivet, Missouri, 63132. Dear County Council, I'm writing with my opinion as a father of four young children and senior manager of a mid-sized business. The most direct path towards economic recovery is guidance and action from government authorities that makes that makes citizens feel safe when leaving their homes to go to work, the store, or out for leisure activities. As a family, we need to understand what steps the government is taking and what steps we can take to minimize our risk in public. We will not be eating in restaurants, enrolling our children in camps or sports, or doing nonessential shopping until we feel like our safety risks are low and we have the information to make educated cost-benefit analysis. We have no interest in risking the health of our children and family by resuming normal activity until there's Excuse me, until there is ubiquitous mask usage, widely available testing, and a robust and effective contract tracing system, all of which rely on a slow, evidence-based reopening plan with continued social distancing restrictions. As a business operator, we have received guidance from the county regarding spacing masks and what to do if an employee is ill. These guidelines have helped us have productive conversations with employees, customers, and vendors regarding responsible reasonable expectation for all parties. Our primary need is for more access to rapid testing for employees. Asking a business to suspend operation for 14 days because of a potential COVID-19 case is a significant drain on morale and productivity. Our company has already lost over 1,000 work hours because of suspected COVID-19 exposures that could possibly have been avoided if our employees had been able to access a test. We want to maximize employee and societal safety, and rapid testing must occupy a vital place in any reopening plan.
Deb Matush, 1455 Cragwell Road, Kirkwood, Missouri, 63122. I wrote last week for the first time and am finding myself writing again because of my concern for my community. I listened to the statistics for the Wuhan virus for the St. Louis County for the St. Louis County this morning on the news and think the numbers to look look great for reopening. If it is true that the numbers are driving your decision, while the numbers are in and they favor reopening, quarantine, as I understand it, is for those who are ill. The numbers tell the story. St. Louis is not so ill, so nothing is holding you back but yourselves. Why? When you attempt to skirt the law and keep the healthy in, you step into the territory of tyranny. Please, please, please represent the people. You are the pace setters for either fear or freedom. Opt for freedom. All businesses are essential. While St. Louis is fortunate to have major corporate entities who pay their fair share of taxes, the real backbone of any community are your business owners. We provide service services that take care of needs for many. We pay rent, leases, taxes. We buy essentials from other businesses and support one another thereby supporting our community. We don't get to stop paying our bills, leases, mortgages, utilities, supplies, et cetera. The money coming from the CARES Act should help our businesses. Is there a plan for transparency so we, the people, see your plan for this money? Your track record here is not the greatest. The money is for business, not platforms, or pet projects, or political leanings. Please be wise with our money. Finally, I'm really concerned for the business owner being targeted by you all for opening, i.e., House of Pain Gym. I'm actually more than concerned. I'm a little angry. Suing them, really? With whose money? Are you trying to make an example out of them? Is this the long arm of the bullies of St. Louis County? You could assuage fears if you invested yourself in understanding the plight of the business owner instead of bullying us. By everything I read, they are practicing safe and healthy habits. Could you not personally visit and see for yourself? Is this going to be our Texas saloon incident which wasted that community's money? Or is what you want some national media coverage? I'm struggling to make sense of this. Doesn't seem essential. Our neighbors have it right. St. Charles and Jefferson Counties are back in business. St. Louis closed for business. What a shame. From John Schultheis, 221 Whiting Lane, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63005. Monday marks a very significant date. We finally begin to adjust back to some level of normalcy in our community. I hope that you are as excited as me to get back to work and begin growing our economy and our county. That said, we must understand that we, the citizens, have a responsibility to each other to take the necessary precautions needed to protect the vulnerable and move cautiously as we move forward. However, we must understand that there will be trade-offs. We don't have widespread immunity, and with no vaccine, infections will rise, but what is the long-term plan? I have to imagine it's not to stay isolated until the virus is eradicated. That just isn't an option, and we need to be prepared to face this. The largest the largest question I have is this. If it is indeed our responsibility to act cautiously and to be responsible, then why are we continuing to not open all business? There is risk. There is risk to opening back up, always will be versus shut in your home, but isn't that the trade-off we have to make? I urge, protect the vulnerable, but allow those who are not to make the responsible decisions and support all business. From Jeffrey Lowery, 7186 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. Dear Dr. Page, County Councilor Beth Orwick, Gail Schout, and all council members. I am writing in regards to the property at 7190 Christopher Drive. I am again writing to you this week requesting that steps be taken to assure that Montinito Corporation is not allowed to proceed forward with opening their commercial business. As I have mentioned in previous letters with all of the research I have done, I see nothing that indicates that Montinito is anything but a for-profit business working as a medical residential treatment facility. I believe that they just manipulate manipulate the local ordinances in order to get their foot in the door and get up and running as a commercial business. They call themselves a group home in order to get initial approval for setting up their business under the county zoning ordinances, yet nowhere in their own website do they refer to themselves as a group home. In fact, in a letter from Mark Brady, the legal counsel for Montinito, to Gail Schout, he refers to Montinito as a residential care facility for the treatment of eating disorders. He himself does not even call them a group home, but rather is requesting that they be considered a group home in order to open up their business in a residential neighborhood. I then found it interesting that when applying for parking lot being allowed to be put in the front yard, they refer them refer to themselves as an adult daycare and not a group home. Why are they not calling themselves a group home here? I would assume that is because group homes do not need parking for up to 31 vehicles, but an adult daycare does. Couple of more examples of twisting and contorting words in order to get what they wanted. I am again requesting that everybody involved just please do the right thing and make this go away. We, as the neighbors on Christopher Drive, are also dealing with COVID-19 issues just as everybody else in the country and do not want or need the extra distraction and stress of dealing with this situation. You have the power to make this go away, so please do and reverse the opinion of County Councilor Beth Orwick and make this commercial business go away. Thank you for your time. From Stacy Crawford, cosmetologist, 7918 Marty's Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63123. As a stylist, I am concerned about returning to work too soon. Here are some questions to ask yourselves and experts. We see our clients for hours at a time, faces within inches of each other. How would you feel if you were me? What if you're immunocompromised like me? Would you feel comfortable? How do we cut and color around mask ear loops? Do blow dryers increase the chances of contracting the virus through our eyes or blow inside our mask edges? Can we acquire the right PPE in time? Can we afford it? Will we run out again after the second wave? If I get sick, I can't work and can't draw unemployment. For what, two months? How will I feed my family? What if my spouse gets sick too? Are haircuts worth our homes and lives? If it's your loved one, would you want them to do hair right now? Opening salons could massively explode the number of COVID cases. Look at salons in Jeffco, wearing no PPE. Shouldn't we wait and see trending from Jeffco? Reduced hours and fewer clients means less commission. Can we make it even if we don't get sick? Over the winter, three clients came in with active fevers and sat in my chair pretending not to be sick. Countless people came in with symptoms. Taking temperatures and asking questions won't help me defend myself from asymptomatic and lying clients. How can I trust those who feel their hair is more important than my health? Why are gyms considered high-risk? I feel they are, but salons are not. We come face-to-face within inches of our clients. Gyms don't have people touching or breathing the same airspace. Where are the specific instructions on how to cut and color around masks? The research of likelihood of spreading the virus whilst moving the loops whilst moving the loops. During shampoo and blow dry, what do we do about not being able to wear gloves for some services? We can't find that information anywhere. Do you know what to do? I beg you to put yourself in our shoes. No one needs their hair done. Everyone will survive without it. Is anyone's vanity worth my life? That's the most important question I need answered.
Dear Dr. Sam Page, Gail Schout, Beth Orwick, and council members. My name is Christina Lowery. I live at 7186 Christopher Drive, Oakville, Missouri. I'm writing you again in reference to the residential property at 7190 Christopher Drive. The more I research the for-profit business, Montinito, the more I uncover and the more apparent it becomes that they are not a group home, nor do they intend to function as one. Last week, I cited I cited for you, Dr. Page, and the county council, the guidelines outlined for a group home by the Department of Mental Health. I have since spoken to Mrs. Melissa Jones, who is responsible for licensure and certification for group homes for behavior or health for the states of Missouri for the state of Missouri and Jefferson City. According to Mrs. Jones, Montinito does not meet the regulations for a group home in the state of Missouri. Mrs. Jones went on to say, according to the description on Montinito's website, as to what they are, facility practices, description of their billing practices, staff licensure through joint commission of hospitalization, in her professional opinion, they are a medical treatment facility. Mrs. Jones let me know that as of today, she does not have a request for licensure or certification from Montinito for their supposed group home. She goes on to state that the medical treatment facilities have different regulations, licensure, and certification. Mrs. Jones was very perplexed. If Montinito was applying as a group home, she would know. She had never heard of Montinito until by conversation with her. You know why, Dr. Page and council? It is because they are not a group home. They are a treatment facility. If you need convincing, just look at plans submitted by Montinito for the parking lot with 31-plus parking spots they plan on putting in the front yard. To top it off, they knew that they could not get this passed as a group home, so they list on the plans that they're adult daycare, not a group home. And again, you know why? They're not a group home. They're a medical treatments of Excuse me, a medical treatment facility that needs many spaces. If I was a council member, I would be livid that Montinito was able to circumvent you and your power because of the wrongful opinion of the county councilor Beth Orwick issued in this instance. Dr. Page, you can stop this injustice by not allowing Montinito, a for-profit business, into a residential neighborhood. Sincerely, Lieutenant Colonel Christina Lowery. Excuse me. Next comment from Christine Schultheis, 221 Whiting Lane, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63005. Dr. Page, Council Chair Clancy, and the St. Louis County Council. I'm relieved that you are allowing some businesses to open on May 18. However, I feel your intense restrictions are going to be too taxing on businesses. We now know that COVID-19 is extremely dangerous for older people, but young people in our community should be free to go out. They're free to go about their days as they see fit. Young, healthy people should be allowed to go to gyms, outdoor sports, churches, and schools if they choose. I find it ridiculous that you are spending taxpayer money suing the House of Pain and everyone who went to work out there. Spend that relief money on helping House of Pain keep its doors open and leave healthy people that want to work out alone. Please explain why you need so much contact tracing. Is that going to prevent the virus from spreading? Is that going to prevent hospitals from being overwhelmed? Is it really necessary to find hotspots in St. Louis County? Wikipedia states 3,667 confirmed cases and 246 deaths in St. Louis County. There are so many negatives affecting our community because of these lockdowns. Crime, violence, depression, suicide, poverty, and unemployment, just to name a few. I really wish you'd do everything you can to fully open up the economy and help the businesses in our community. Thank you, Christine Schultheis. Stacy Washington, 167 Lamp and Lantern Village, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017. Dear St. Louis County Council, Excuse me. I continue to be flabbergasted by the lack of good decision-making the Democrat majority engages in each week. Ms. Clancy should immediately schedule a vote to reopen St. Louis County businesses. Dr. Page takes his marching orders from Clancy, so for the good of the county, just do it. Reading the news of how you plan to sue House of Pain Gyms for the lead of several counties in Pennsylvania is utter madness. Another waste of our taxes, using our own money to sue us. Shame. Each week, the Democrat-led county council demonstrates a propensity for mishandling our money. Lastly, is restricting church attendance even constitution? It violates our First Amendment right to freely assemble. Sincerely, Stacy Washington. My name is Lisa Krenning. I live at 7200 Christopher next to 7190. It is hard to believe that St. Louis County Council didn't realize what was really going on. Montinito wanted to keep this quiet because they know that if the neighborhood found out, they would put up a fight and not let this happen. This is a multi-billion-dollar company that gets whatever they want, no matter what. Is Oakville there no matter what? No one says no to them. This is a California-based company, and they're used to getting their way. Why can't Missouri be the first state to stand up for their residents and do the right and fair thing and say no to Montinito? We are the show-me state, and let's show them we won't be bullied. Oakville is fighting back to keep our neighborhood residential and save it from Montinito and not let them do this just because they can. Put yourself in our place. Would you want to come home after working hard all day and have and have to deal with numerous people, deliveries, and 19 cars parked next to your home? This is a residential neighborhood, and Montinito is a business. It does not belong in our neighborhood. Do your jobs and say no to Montinito. Thank you. Next comment from William Pyatt, 7184 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63219. Dear Dr. Page, county government officials, and departments who signed off on a California-based for-profit business, Montinito opening a medical facility business on residential Christopher Drive in Oakville. I have a question. When each of you ran for and won your election, inherited, or were appointed to your position in the St. Louis County government, was it your mission to help sneak out of state for-profit businesses into quiet neighborhoods that are full of families, single-family residences, and completely inappropriate for a medical facility? Neighborhoods full of taxpaying citizens who trusted you and relied on you to protect their property values and the way of life they bought into when they purchased their home in that particular neighborhood. If that was your mission, congratulations. You should be very proud of yourself. In fact, I invite you to take a short drive to Oakville so you can see your handiwork in person, because you should be so proud. I say that because I am virtually certain that not one of you signed off on this or had anything to do with it, being thrust upon us or had the power to stop it and keep our neighborhood a neighborhood instead of a high-traffic Traffic, excuse me, business area even took the time to come here and take a look at what you were signing us up for. And that seems like the very least one of you would do if they cared even a little bit about their constituents. Thank you for that. Very courteous, professional, and in the spirit of representation. Only you chose to represent the for-profit business from California over your own people. Out-of-state for-profit medical facility wants to operate in a neighborhood of my constituents who have lived here and paid taxes and supported the county for years. I want to build a big parking lot right in the face of neighbors? Increase traffic by who knows how much, making the winding drive more dangerous? Sounds good to me. Sure, where do I sign? I'm sure the people of Oakville and especially those Those near and on Christopher Drive will love it. Just don't tell them until after the closing. Just don't tell them until after the closing. Thank you again for having our backs. August is right around the corner and we are growing.
Our last three public comments this evening. The first one comes from Ralph DePalma, seven oh-three Josephine Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri, six-three-one-two-two. I believe many citizens and business owners that are frustrated with the COVID nineteen response because with the exception of this virtual one-way forum, there is no available forum for citizen advocacy. Also, the media briefings which Dr. Page is conducting are limited in scope, specifics and distribution. Both of the above factors contribute to a perceived lack of transparency in revealing what the St. Louis County plan to test and reopen is. The resulting is citizen frustration and ultimately non-compliance. Please better inform us by one, please tell us what the testing plan is. Two, what can we expect in the near future for testing for both viral diagnostic and antibody tests? Not only what numbers should be available, but what groups will the tests be available to? And what will be the procedure and prerequisites to obtain such tests? Lastly, what kind of surveillance plan will be put in place and when? Number three, please tell us what the phased reopening plan is. Number four, it does not appear we are proceeding with the federal phased plan, but something similar. Assuming we are in a type of phase one on eighteen May, what is that plan with respect to future phases? Realizing Executive Page and the task force has stated that there will be no timeline and that data will be driving factor, will be the driving factor. What are those general thresholds for the multiple data pieces to move to the next phases? In conclusion, I would implore you to post or link this testing and reopening plan, not just the phase one public health order, all the media press conferences and other pertinent data, including some of the hospital data the task force is utilizing to the St. Louis Corona website. The current information on the site is useful. However, I believe most citizens want to know what the plan is. Some of the information on the site is dated and none of it is forward-looking. With that in mind, please be advised, in addition to news, people desire progress and hope too. I believe during the week of eighteen May, you will see the result of this pent-up desire. Thank you for your time. From Amy Charlton, thirty-four oh-one Sutton Avenue, Maplewood, Missouri, six-three-one-four-three. I am a massage therapist in St. Louis County, Maplewood. I've been a massage therapist for ten years. I love my job and can't wait to work with my client. However, I want to work safely, right? It's not for me to safely work. I strongly suggest massage be characterized in the later phases of reopening. This is due to several important factors. COVID nineteen symptoms include blood clots, clotting issues in otherwise asymptomatic individuals. Blood clots are a widely recognized and taught contraindication to massage and possible to socially distance. Limited availability of PPE and disinfectants. Small, close-quarter treatment rooms with limited airflow. Thank you. And our final comment this evening comes from Rich Ellis, seventy-one forty Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, six-three-one-two-nine. Dear county officers, I am extremely disappointed in the lack of transparency shown in allowing Montenegro, a business to set up shop in a quiet residential neighborhood without first considering its residents. The planning department and the councilor's office failed in representing the residents who pay their salaries. Why were the residents not considered? Or if they were, please show me where they were consulted. Allowing a business which caters to addicts does not belong in a residential neighborhood. You failed us up to this point. I am requesting you do the right thing and put a hold on allowing Montenegro to set up their business without first having public meetings to determine if this is acceptable to all parties involved. Your lack of transparency is embarrassing and frightening. Madam Chair, that is all the public comments for this evening.
That concludes public forums. Proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number one eleven, introduced by councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute contracts with Erica Chris, Bethany Dynan and Cassandra Russe for the provision of after-hours provider phone coverage services for the Department of Public Health. Bill number one twelve, introduced by councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to one hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars from the Missouri Family Health Council, appropriating the same for support of the Department of Public Health's Title X Family Planning Services Program and authorizing the director of the Department of Public Health to execute necessary documents. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
We will proceed with perfection.
Bill number twenty, introduced by councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill number twenty is held.
Bill number five, introduced by councilmembers Fitch, Tracus and Harder.
I move to hold bill number five.
Bill number five is held.
Bill number thirty-two, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move to hold bill number thirty-two.
Bill number thirty-two is held.
Bill number thirty-six, introduced by councilmember Fitch.
I move to hold bill number thirty-six.
Bill number thirty-six is held.
Bill number seventy-six, introduced by councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold bill number seventy-six.
Bill number seventy-six is held.
Bill number one oh-nine, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
Um, we will be holding bill number one oh-nine. Bill number one oh-nine is held.
Bill number one-ten, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number one-ten.
Second, Dunaway.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one-ten is perfected. Moving on to final passage.
Bill number three-twenty, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold bill number three-twenty. Bill number three-twenty is held.
Substitute bill number two for bill number three-eighty-five, introduced by councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold substitute bill number two for bill number three-eighty-five.
Substitute bill number two for bill number three-eighty-five is held.
Bill number fourteen, introduced by councilmembers Tracus, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy and Harder.
Move to hold bill number fourteen, please.
Bill number fourteen is held.
Bill number one oh-eight, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number one oh-eight.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
You're on mute, Rida. Hi, sorry.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number one oh-eight, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one oh-eight is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one resolution this evening. Resolution one, introduced by councilmembers Walton Gray, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Clancy, Tracus and Harder.
Please read the resolution. Well, let me.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if you want to read the entire thing, but you can read the resolution.
How far would you like me to read?
I guess go ahead and read it.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas National Nurses Week takes place annually from May sixth, designated as National Nurses Day through May twelfth, the birthday of Florence Nightingale. And whereas the purpose of Nurses Week is to elevate and celebrate the nursing profession by honoring the commitment, dedication and hard work of those in the nursing profession. And whereas in twenty twenty, recognizing and voicing our appreciation for our family members, friends and neighbors in the nursing profession is more important than ever as nurses are risking their lives every day as frontline workers in the fight against the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas during this pandemic, people around the world have been reminded that the skill and expertise of nurses is vital to the health and well-being of all communities. Leading the American Nurses Association and the World Health Organization to declare twenty twenty as the global year of the nurse. And whereas the nurses employed by St. Louis County play an integral role in the Department of Public Health's mission to keep St. Louis County one of the best places in the region to live, work or visit by regularly assessing the health and environment of the county and responding with sound policies that help assure the availability of high-quality public health services for everyone. And whereas at a time when nurses are on the front line of a world health crisis, nursing professionals need our support now more than ever. And it is appropriate for the council and all St. Louis countyans to pause and appreciate that nurses make a life-saving difference in our community each and every day. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the county council acknowledges the vital role nursing professionals play in the lives of individual patients and in maintaining public health. Section two, the acting administrative director shall send two certified copies of this resolution to the acting co-directors of the Department of Public Health to share with the county nursing professionals as a permanent token of the council's esteem, admiration and gratitude.
I move for the adoption of resolution number one.
Second, Tracus.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze. Thank you. Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Fitch.
I tried to get my RN wife to come into the room while this was red, but she's working, so aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries. Resolution number one is adopted.
And since councilmember Fitch mentioned his wife, I would like to actually, whenever we're able to have the public come back to our meetings, which I know will be quite a while. Um, I would like to recognize the nurses in one of our meetings and have them come out to the council meeting. So councilman Fitch, don't let me forget about your Fitch.
Hold on, I'll make her come in with us.
Her wife, thank you.
Absolutely.
Moving on to unfinished business. Item number one.
The appointment be held on the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number two.
The appointments and reappointment be held on the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number three.
The appointment be held on the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number four.
The appointments be held on the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number five.
The appointment be held on the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number six, Sixth District.
Will the new license be approved as requested, please?
Second, Harder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, we have no new business this evening.
Um, that brings us to the end of our agenda. I did want to share with everyone that on Thursday evening at seven o'clock um, through WebEx, I will be doing a town hall um, for my district to talk about the small business relief program and to hear um, questions from small business owners about the process, to share my approach to the process and to also hear priorities from residents of my district about the types of businesses we should be funding, although not lobbying for specific businesses. Um, that will be seven o'clock on Thursday night and you can find more information on my Facebook page about that. Um, do any other council members have anything they would like to share before we adjourn?
Madam Chairwoman, I would like to, uh, thank you. Uh, I'd like to ask Executive Page, does he have an idea or the rest of us have an idea when we would return to our council chambers for our normal meeting?
Uh, thank you, Councilman. I don't have an idea at this point in time. We're going to wait and see how the numbers go in the next couple of weeks.
How about returning government to its normal standing of people working in the building and, and things like that?
Well, we're going to follow the guidelines of all essential businesses and ask folks to um, stay at home and work from home if they can. Um, we've been conducting all of the essential businesses, government, um, from home. People drop off their plans for approval. As you all know, we really haven't withheld any, too many government services at all, other than some face-to-face contact. But um, we'll be reopening the building as probably in the next phase as we start to um, uh, watch the data and consider opening the rest of the county. But we do have a reopening plan in place. The question is when we will initiate it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Harder, to address that as well, I think that um, the council will need to consider our plans to reopen the chambers um, in a way that is aligned with the plans to reopen the rest of the building. So we will uh, be collaborating with the county executive's office um, to follow along with the decisions to reopen the building and plan accordingly.
And may I please also remind people that, thank you so much, Chairwoman. Until there are childcare options, some of us are going to be stuck on the computer for a while. So I hope that even if we do reopen council chambers and most of us can return to the way we regularly do business, that doesn't mean all of us can and that there will be an opportunity to continue to do things the way we're currently doing them.
I think that the opening the council meetings is different than opening back up for business because there, sometimes that council chambers is full of people. I think that's a little bit different than one or two people coming to do business at the county. And you can require people to make appointments. I've seen there were some other businesses that normally have walk-ins. They don't do that. They have appointments, but we can't do that. So I think this, we can't really even align ourselves with the government building opening. Different, a lot different to me.
Lots to consider. Any other comments from the council before we adjourn? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.